Has everybody had an agenda item number one, the approval of the minutes? Everybody had a chance to read them? Can I have a motion? Motion from Joe. Second from Don. All in favor?
And I refuse myself.
Okay. Second agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here invitation to speak? I don't see anybody. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence and distributions.
Mr. Chairman, in the packet, members have the Hospitality Tourism Management Program newsletter. You had a chance to review that. Excited to report too, that a number of our students have already secured either college or job placements as a result of being in the Hospitality Tourism Management Program. In fact, just today, our intern who works in our office as part of the hospitality program, she is, on one of the field trips, they visited the Woodland Golf Club. And while the girl was there, she expressed that this place seems great. I'm in the Hospitality Tourism Program. Would you ever consider me for a job? And they hired her on the spot.
Wow, really?
So she's now started, another student on a field trip that we did to Johnson and Wales, the student applied early decision, was accepted to Johnson and Wales, is going there to study hospitality management. Yet another student is currently working at the Doubletree Hotel and is going into the business. Another girl who's in the program will be taking over her parents' business in the restaurant industry. So it's just the placement rate is even more impressive than I had hoped it would be. We had a student interest survey that we did with an assembly at the high school, and as I understand it, Karen, all the numbers changed. About forty students have expressed interest for twenty spots. So it's becoming competitive now at the same time. It just shows that this is really the right thing for us to have done. There's certainly a market for that. So I wanted to share that if you hadn't had a chance to read the newsletter yet, give it a look. It's really quite impressive. So my appreciation to Carrie, to your team, Matt Bayon, to the staff, Katie Maloney, and to all the folks who made that possible. So thanks.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make that announcement.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to commend Dr. McIntyre and the staff at several schools that are running the park, forums for parents. There, I was able to attend the Woodland Forum the other night, and it was very informative, very well done, very thorough, and the school administration made a real point of staying and explaining to parents they would stay as late as they needed them to, to answer questions of which there were quite a few, as it's something that's so new and so overwhelming for parents. So thank you for that great explanation and helping ease some concerns on the part of parents.
Thank you. We have great questions from the parents. They're very, very thoughtful questions, both in Woodland and in Stacy E.'s presentation as well. That we did last night. A great turnout.
Yeah, it was. Thank you.
Anybody else? Don?
Yeah, I've had several correspondences with parents over the last month. Just want to take this opportunity to, you know, discuss a couple of things, and then Mike for safety and security. I know you're, the meeting is on Monday.
Yes, Monday.
I'm not going to be able to attend that.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure you took one of these items to that meeting.
Sure.
And it might even involve Joe with the policy subcommittee to help. That'll be up to Bob and Carrie. But one of the things that happened was, I'm going to say around a month ago, I got a phone call. Somebody was pretty upset that somebody in the special ed group had put a call into an administrator to explain that she was witnessing a couple of kids leaving the school and going into the woods. And the administrator replied, "That's not my job." Okay? So I had asked Bob to reach out and see if that really did happen. Unfortunately, it did. So my point, first thing I did was, you know, it's not my job. I'm sorry, but being on the subcommittee, Safety and Security Subcommittee for the last three years, kind of took that to heart because I think it's everybody's job to make sure that we're, you know, the well-being of the students is top priority.
Right.
Whether you're an administrator, a teacher, or an employee in this building. And when I looked at the duties, you know, there were, there were three out of the first four that talked about it. And the fourth one specifically said supervise student conduct within the school, oversees disciplinary procedures, and keeps records of disciplinary actions. So it's certainly their job. So what I would like to do is ask you, Mike, to talk about this on Monday, on the safety and security, and support Bob in communicating to everybody that this is a priority and that, you know, it's everybody's responsibility. And Carrie, I'm happy that you're here because if you or any of the principals need the help of this board to put policies in place to support the disciplinary actions of somebody who doesn't follow through on their duties, then we should have that. Because I find it interesting that we have a policy, you know, and, you know, we've talked about it numerous times over the last three years about coaching. There's a three-step, you know, first offense, it's verbal, second offense, suspension, third time you're terminated. And if we need to address that as the policy board, to put something in strength to support you, to make sure that these things don't happen again, then we should do that. Okay? So that's all I'm going to say about it, but...
Was it at the high school level, Donnie?
Yeah, it was at, it was at the high school level.
Okay.
Okay, so then the second part is I've had numerous calls from parents about the guidance department and not getting back to them and responding to them. There was a parent who told me that they had a, they put calls into the guidance department, and it, they, and not until they complained did they get a call. And the call came from you, Bob, so I appreciate you taking the agenda and reaching out to that person. But that's not your job, and it should never have gotten to that point, right? And I say this because how many times have I talked about the lack of communication between guidance and parents? And I can say this because I've lived it. I've had a child in need here. I've had a child that left the school and had an assistant principal go out and grab him and drag him back, and we're able to get him help. But the support that you get as a parent from the guidance department really needs to be addressed. Now, I know I'm leaving here in six weeks, but I would really hope that, you know, my fellow members here would really take this as an initiative for the rest of the year and reach out to parents, talk to parents, especially during the school process, you know. One of the things that I hate hearing is, oh, they're too busy, they're overwhelmed. But I sit there and say, "We have seven guidance counselors." Well, when I was in school, we had two, you know, and we had a lot more students back then. So I know times have changed and things are a little bit more complex, but there's no excuse for people not getting back to a parent who has a concern about their child. Period. So I'd really like to see if we can, we can address that. But, you know, those were calls that I got from parents. And it wasn't just one parent about the guidance. There were several others, you know. There was one with, you know, a drug issue, reaching out. I believe that person did get a response though, because I asked her to let me know if she didn't. So I haven't heard from her, but that's a good thing. So anyway...
Donnie, was there any grade that had particularly more calls than, than others?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, the, the, right now, it's a lot to do with the seniors, right? They're all trying to get into schools. Some parents need help, they need guidance, they have questions, whatever it might be. And they're not getting a response. I mean, if parents are watching this, I would hope that they'd reach out to us and, and help us understand what we can do to improve the program. So it's, you know, we, my whole goal here is just to make things better, so... But if, if anybody wants to reach out to myself or anybody here to let us know, you know, what their experience has been. Because I remember last year, I remember there was a woman called, and she was absolutely devastated because her child applied to every single state school, and the child got rejected by every single state school. And, you know, if you do applications, they're about fifty, sixty dollars a piece or more. And so as a favor, I called into the administration group at Worcester State College, and I got on the phone with the head, I forget his title. But anyway, he explained to me that the state schools have a new rule that they can't accept you if you have a GPA under two point five. And I don't know if you remember this, Mike, but I said, "Guys, listen, we need to communicate that to the students next year so they're not applying if they don't have the two point five and wasting their parents' money." And so I hope that happens. But again, if people, if they had these types of experience or having those, please let us know. But I really think that we owe it to the parents of this community and the kids to make sure that they're at least hearing back from guidance when they're asking them, you know, questions, so... That was it. On a really cool note, there was like an aloha spaghetti dinner down in the cafeteria just now with Craig Consigli in the, in the Woodland School. They invited a hundred and seventy parents or kids were going to come to this. So that's, that's a fun note. I always like to end it on a fun note.
Can I just tag on to that for a minute, Don?
Yeah. The spaghetti dinner or the guidance?
No, not the spaghetti dinner, although I think it's a great event.
Yeah.
You know, one thing I think we can do to be helpful as a board of people who come to us is really remind people of that chain of command. And obviously, everyone cares incredibly about the safety of kids. And I know it can be frustrating as a school administrator when you haven't heard anything from a parent, and then suddenly you get a call from your superintendent, and you don't know anything of the situation. So hopefully, if parents are having concerns, they are able to call the school first. If they've hit a roadblock in one area, which could happen, that they go to the principal and then, you know, then go to Bob. So they, I think that we can help parents understand that chain of command and what to do when they just don't know what to do. Because I think sometimes they don't realize, and we don't actually oversee these people. You know, Bob does, and the school principals do. So I think if we could remind people of that, it would probably help also.
That's a good point. My, again, my, my main thing is i- if, if people are, you know, struggling with this or concerned or anything else like that, you know, in six weeks, there's going to be a changing of the guard. And when there's a changing of guard, there's always subcommittee, you know, subcommittees created and dissolved. And if, if it's a, if it is a big need, you know, I think one of my last recommendations would be to, to consider, you know, a subcommittee to work with guidance and see if we can get that line of communication working better. But anyway, that was, that's it.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Since we have Carrie in, in the room, Carrie, I'm, I'm wondering if you could just think about, not, not to answer now, what your expectations would be on your guidance staff in terms of the timeliness of a return call if a parent does place a question. I don't know that we've ever adopted a firm policy on that, but I guess I'm curious just to know how it works in practice and what your expectations are. We can hear about that at a future, at a future meeting.
Anybody else?
So I have one more announcement. We have the, our Chinese exchange students here this week. They spent two days in DC prior to coming to Milford. They've spent, they arrived in Milford on Sunday and are staying until Saturday morning, and then heading to San Francisco for four days, five days. And I had the opportunity to take them, to join them on a trip to Harvard University, a tour of Harvard University, and a tour of the State House. And it was, it was actually a fantastic experience. It was freezing in Harvard Yard. But we wrapped up the tour at the John Harvard statue, and I told all the students that that was my great-great-grandfather, which I thought was kind of amusing. And then one of John Harvard's shoes is actually, it's a bronze statue if you've ever been in Harvard Yard. And one of the shoes is green. And the tour guide, one of the students asked, "Well, why is that shoe green?" Because the belief is that if you rub the foot of John Harvard, you have a better opportunity of getting accepted into Harvard University. So all of the Chinese students ran up there and started touching John Harvard's foot. So it was, it was the tour at the State House. I want to thank Representative Fernandez for setting that up for us. It was phenomenal. We had a great experience. We had an opportunity to tour the offices as well. And, and just to see that building is fantastic. The students got a lot out of it in the Harvard tour. They loved the Harvard tour, they loved seeing Harvard. That's, that's, that's the dream of the Chinese students that are, that are over here. But it was, it was a great day. I think they're having a great week. There's been a lot of fun experiences planned. And I, and I think it's, it's a development of a really great relationship that we're seeing. So I just wanted to share that with the committee.
Thank you. I actually got to spend some time with them. They, they came up to the Miss Mendon diner for lunch, and then I got them and gave them a tour of all three facilities. And it was, it was wild. They got, when they got the Chevrolet, they were, you know, jumping in out of the cars, taking selfies, shooting off. One girl walked up to a brand of Camaro, and she says, "I want this one in yellow." And they speak pretty good English, you know. She told me that in China, it would be three times what it is in this country and this. But like I said to Bob, I called Bob last night, and I said, "At the end of the day, when you're around them for a while and you watch them, they're kids. They have iPhones, backpacks, Nikes. They're just a different culture." But they're really just, it's, they're a lot of fun to be around. They make you laugh, they really do.
Yeah.
From a whole different part of the world.
We get a great to them today, too.
Yeah, yeah. And their school day, oh, that's one of the things we were talking about. They go to school roughly from seven in the morning until nine, nine-thirty at night with a two-hour break. And how do you, how do you do any of that? How do you study? How do you, they figure it out. You know? I was amazed, five thousand kids eating lunch at the same time. I mean, it's just that the numbers are overwhelming when you talk to them, you know? So it was a lot of fun. It really was. It was great to have them, so thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Oh, save it for the sports.
And with that, we move on to Milford High School 2016 Program of Studies.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for coming.
I would just like to start by thanking Mr. Quatrochio for his, his insight and, and just to let the committee know how important the achievement of the guidance department, of all of our departments, of our school is to me. And any time that we can get feedback from parents as to how we can improve, what we can do differently, that's very important to me, and I certainly want to, I will take that to heart. What I will say is that we have had three guidance directors in four years, so there has been some transition with the leadership within the department. And we do, you know, we have our college planning nights for parents, for the seniors and for the juniors, and our scholarship night was recently as well. But I think that, you know, sometimes when you have these big group assemblies in the auditorium, not everyone can make it. It's not convenient for everyone. And certainly, having a subcommittee that we could form to talk about what we could do differently, maybe different ways that we could communicate information to parents and really meet the needs of our parents and students on their terms. That, that's very important. College admissions, as you mentioned, is so complex.
Carrie, on, on the college admissions too, maybe next year, like, one of the things that would be kind of cool is to not just have these forums, but, well, have, have like a parent forum where they can communicate with one another. Because some of the things that parents pick up during this process, because I, you know, I've been through it now three times in the last four years. So I feel like I'm an expert, you know? And so...
Sure you are, yeah.
But there's resources out there, you know, like links to, you know, grants and stuff like that that some people might not know about. But maybe if you could create some sort of a parent, you know, collaborative community forum that allows them to share some of these things that they're finding out, I bet you the community would really love something like that, you know? Because it's a stressful, stressful time, you know?
Well, you know, during senior week, we have a student-to-student forum. So the students, for example, this year, the students from the class of 2014 will come back and talk to the class of 2016, and we do that during senior week. But that, to have a parent-to-parent forum, that, that would be great. That's a wonderful idea, so... But, but I want you to know how important that is to me. And certainly, responsiveness is extremely important. And that is something that we did address at the beginning of the year, and certainly I will, something that I will continue to address and make sure that our parents are receiving information in a timely way and that we're meeting the needs of all of our students and parents in the college admissions process. It has become very complicated. We have many students who have applied to ten, fifteen colleges. And as you mentioned, the cost of that is anywhere from fifty to two hundred dollars per application. So it's quite an expense before a student even knows whether or not they've been accepted. So, so I appreciate your, your insight and your, your feedback and your advice. And I'll be happy to come back and prepare a report and move that forward. So what I'd like to present to you tonight is some information on course scheduling for 2016. We did have a presentation on January sixteenth for our parents. It was the first time that we had, have done an academic scope and sequence for our parents. So we invited all the parents in grades eight through eleven to come in on the sixteenth. We had a great turnout. It was wonderful. What we did differently this year, not only in presenting the scope and sequence, we had all the curriculum team leaders and a number of teachers in attendance. And so in the past, when we've had parent forums and so forth, it's usually administration and guidance. But this year, we had all of our curriculum team leaders and some teachers present on their disciplines, which makes all the difference in the world because the teachers can speak directly to the Program of Studies, to the course offerings, to the new courses. And I think parents just really enjoy seeing the teachers and having the teachers present and talk about their departments. So we videotaped it. It is on the website. So any parent who missed it is just, it's right on the homepage. You don't have to dig through any of the side tabs. It's right front and center. And then we had a PowerPoint presentation as well. So that information about the process of the scope and sequence, it, it takes a student, for example, in, in science, you could, you start in biology or physics nine, and then where you go to the tenth grade and then to the eleventh and the twelfth. It took, took everyone through all the advanced placement courses and what a student needs to achieve, what level they need to achieve at in order to reach the advanced placement and so forth. So we do have a great video. It's about an, it's about an hour and a half, the video, and then the PowerPoint slideshow is with that as well. So we started that on the sixteenth, and we have evolved to today. We're what, we, we gave out today the course selection sheets to students in grades nine, ten, and eleven for electives only. Because last year, we started for the first time with our electronic recommendations for major academics. So in the five major academic arenas, English, math, science, foreign language, and social studies, the current teacher makes a recommendation electronically through X two. And parents will be able to view all of this through the family portal. And that way, when a student goes to sit with their guidance counselor, with their elective sheet and the electives that they choose, the academics, the major academics are already populated into the student's schedule. And then we add the electives, and then we print the parent's signature page, and that goes home to the parents to sign off that these are the courses that the student is taking for the following year. So just today, we gave out those sheets, and then we have assemblies tomorrow with grades nine, ten, and eleven, just to talk through the process again. The teachers are, are making recommendations right now. They have until the end of this month to make the recommendations in the five major academics. And then in the month of March, the students will meet with their, each student will meet with their guidance counselor. And then our guidance counselors and our guidance director go over to East and do the scheduling process with the eighth graders and with the guidance counselor at East. So that, that's the process for scheduling the students for next year. We explained to the students too that the, the choice of electives, students will pick three electives because the scheduling is in descending order, seniors first. So seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. So the freshmen, we explained to them that if you end up, if, if you have creative writing on your schedule next year and you didn't select creative writing, it's because the electives that you chose were filled by upperclassmen. And so, and that's just the way it is in schools. There's so many sections of each class, and, and once they're filled, students, usually freshmen may have to take an elective that they didn't choose. So all the students need to have a full schedule, with the exception of the seniors and juniors who have the opportunity to take the Humanities and STEM Achievement Center. We talked about last year where students have the option, students who are in a rigorous Program of Studies, who are involved in multitude of sports, clubs, activities, and they need a little time during their day to get some work done with access to a teacher. And that's worked, that's worked very well this year. This semester, we have fifty students between the junior and senior class who are taking advantage of having some time during their day to, to get some work done. So it, we had, at the beginning, a couple, you know, we have an application process for this because we want to be very cautious with it because it's not a study hall. It's not a chance for a student to just go have a free period and not do anything. This is a period that a student needs because they're so scheduled outside of school with sports, clubs, commitments in the community, work, and what have you, that they could really benefit from some time during school. So we were very clear in that process. We worked closely with guidance in that, making sure that we were judicious about who would be in there and that students were indeed qualified to, to have that time. So that's for juniors and seniors only. So that's worked out well, and it's, that has remained in the Program of Studies for this year as well. So we have on March twentieth, a parent forum coming up to talk about course selection in addition to the January sixteenth. This will be a more personalized approach. We did this last year. It's at seven thirty in the morning in the teacher's lunchroom. It's a, a coffee, a parent coffee, where parents can come in and meet with administration and guidance to answer any questions that they may have about their child's schedule. Last year when we did this, we had a number of eighth-grade parents who came in. The, the eighth-grade students and parents have the most questions naturally. And so we welcome them to come in, and it's nice because it's before the freshman orientation, and they can get a little head start on some questions that they might have before we have the summer freshman orientation program. In Blackboard Connect, announcement will also go out over the weekend to parents, just informing them of the parent coffee that's coming up in the scheduling process and the course selection sheets that went out. So for next year, we have two hundred, so two hundred and thirty-five courses that we are running. Right now, we have two hundred and eighty-one. The, the difference between those two, though, are the VHS courses, because those won't be scheduled until the end of the, the end of the school year, the beginning of next year. VHS starts in late August like we do, and we have fifty seats. So our two hundred and thirty-five classes will quickly swell because of the virtual high school, the independent studies, the internships, the teaching assistant program, and the Hospitality and Tourism Management Program. So I expect that we'll be around two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety classes next year, when all is said and done. Okay, so we also, so in terms of new course offerings, we have a couple new electives in the Business Department. We have Office Computer Applications two, because we have Office Computer Applications one this year. So we're going to add the next level of that for next year. So that will be taught in the Business Department, as well as we have a course offering in e-commerce that we offered two years ago. We didn't offer it last year. Couldn't fit that in the schedule last year, but we are floating that as an elective as well. Hospitality and Tourism Management two for our current HTM students who will be graduating into the second year of the program. And then, as Dr. Tremblay said, we have forty applications for twenty seats for our, our cohort for next year. So that will be a very rigorous process. And a number of students have been asking me, "So when am I going to get my interview?" They're, they're very excited to come in and have their interview with the committee. So those are offerings for next year, along with a couple new offerings in art. We have portfolio prep for the students who are going to art school, who need to prepare a comprehensive portfolio of work. So we're going to offer that in the fall, as well as Intro to Visual Art and Intro to Drawing and Painting. In the Math Department, Geometry Concepts, we had a new level last year of Algebra I Concepts. And we have the Concepts level, the College Prep level, and the Honors level. And so we will be offering Geometry Concepts for the students who took the Algebra I Concepts this year. We have an elective in the Science Department. Cellular and Molecular Biology is being offered. The Physics Nine class, that was new this year, will continue on for next year. Eighty students enroll in Physics Nine. And so we'll be ordering the MCAS Physics exam for those ninth-grade students for the first time. We'll be offering that in June. And we're very interested to see how this, how this goes for our students who are in that Physics Nine class. And those, those are the new electives that we're floating for next year in addition to all of our other court, the other two hundred and thirty-five courses that, that we offer. The Greenhouse Project, this is an initiative that Superintendent Tremblay has had and that we've been having conversations about in meetings. And we're looking to have that course and the work that's involved in the greenhouse be a combination of Advanced Placement Environmental Science and Advanced Placement Biology. Both of those teachers are very interested in working and being a part of that program with their students, along with the vocational students. So I had met with the Science Department, and they're very excited about the opportunity to be a part of the Greenhouse Project as well. The wheel that we introduced last year, that was the sophomore class that had the quarter each, quarter of health, quarter of PE, quarter of sophomore seminar, and quarter of current events. That too has, has been terrific. The sophomore seminar class, they have covered, they've covered so much ground with career education, with public speaking, with, actually, they've teamed up with guidance to do some of that career work in the college planning. The guidance counselors do a guidance seminar with students, and they pull them out of class. And so with the tenth-grade students, rather than do a pull-out in the English or the history, now they're going into the sophomore seminar. So that class has, has really proven to be very successful. The kids really enjoy it. It's a very quick, it's only a quarter. Each quarter's forty-five days, but we drop one out of the seven-day rotation. So the classes meet about thirty-two times. So that, the wheel will continue, and that's been very successful as well. As far as... Um, as far as our, um, I just want to touch on the CTE, the Career Tech Education. In addition to the chapter 74, the hospitality and tourism management, we have the CTE which is under the Perkins Grant. And we do have about 760 students who are taking Career Tech Ed. So, we will continue on with the, the sequence of those courses as well because they all come under our Perkins Grant. And there's a lot of reporting out, um, to the Department of Education about enrollment, about students and college placement in Career Tech Ed as, um, relevant to them completing a sequence of two or more classes in Career Tech Ed at our school. So, the programs that will continue on there are web design, video production, robotics, photography, Java programming, modern film, food service management, engineering technology, computer technology, computer aided design, and web design. So, those are our CTE, um, programs that we have that come under our Perkins Grant. So, um, and to have 760 students involved in those courses is terrific because that's a lot of, um, that, that impacts funding through the Perkins Grant and so forth. So, um, so that's terrific. And we also have, um, in our advanced placement, we introduced a new AP course this year in world history. That course, 45 students, I believe, um, nine through 12 in all grade levels into that class. So, that's been, um, very successful. We're running 16 advanced placement classes, um, in the high school. In addition to that, we have one independent study in Italian, two independent studies in studio art, virtual high school, um, computer science advanced placement, a government class on virtual high school advanced placement, and physics C as well. So, it's 21, um, advanced placement courses. So, in addition to all of our college prep and honors courses. So. So, I present to you, that's our program of studies for 2016. All of this will be up on the web. Program of studies, course selection sheets, um, videos are up there. I will add that, um, a little bit of a sidebar, but there's also a presentation up there from the scholarship night, the local scholarships that students apply for. Um, there was, uh, an evening on that and that presentation also is at the website. So, we're trying to get a lot of information up on our website to make it accessible for parents too. So.
Thank you. Open it up to questions. Patrick?
Carrie, could you just speak a little bit about, um, students moving from the algebra concepts to the geometry concepts classes? Would 100% of the group that took algebra concepts then go on to take geometry concepts? Or do we have a portion of those students, um, placing in a more rigorous geometry?
Absolutely. So, depending upon student achievement, student, uh, work ethic, student, um, seriousness of purpose in their learning. Absolutely. A teacher could, um, definitely make a recommendation for that, for a student to move up a level. Um, same for college prep level. If a student was in algebra college prep and the students had a terrific year, worked really hard, that student absolutely could move up to the honors level.
Because this is, this is the first year of our geometry concepts class, correct?
Yes.
And so, um, what, what have you been seeing that's necessitating that geometry concepts class?
What we've been seeing with some of the students as they're coming into the freshman year, they need, um, they need remediation in some areas. And so, they need, um, a little bit of a smaller class, a bit more attention, a little reinforcement of some skills in, in order to be better prepared. Because we, we know with the MCAS coming, with, um, the PSAT and the SAT, um, skill, the student skills have to be at a certain level in order to achieve. And so, just, we want to make sure that they have those skills before they move to the next level.
How does the breadth of topics covered in the geometry concepts class compare to a basic geometry class?
The, the breadth of, of topics, it, it's, it's similar, but the pacing is different and the classes are smaller. And so, the amount of time spent on, on a topic would, would be longer in a concepts class. Also, there may be in a con- on a concepts class, a teaching assistant. So, whether that be a senior student teaching assistant, um, who comes in and works, somebody who's maybe in AP calculus and comes in and does some work along with the teacher to support that student.
That was my next question. You anticipated it. Thank you. Sorry. Yes. Thank you. Anybody else? Joe?
Just had a question regarding the career readiness, uh, class that you touched on. Is any, any thought been given to expanding upon that or do we feel that a quarter is sufficient?
With the sophomore seminar class, the, the way, um, it, it, it works is there's one topic for each rotation because we're on that seven day cycle. And so, a career education class, one area that that's really blossoming is in our pathways program. They're working with students, um, on some career education. Um, recently, um, the staff in that department have met with, um, Milford TV to talk with them about some internships for our students. And along with that would be a career education class prior to going out in the field. Um, skill development around professional communication, professional dialogue, um, the importance of, of being on time, being prompt, following directions from, from your supervisor and so forth. A career education class, um, I think that would be, I think that would be a great idea. I think it's in keeping with a lot of our chapter 74 and our Career Tech Ed, um, offerings to have a course for students as an elective, maybe for a semesterized elective, especially for students who are going into the workforce from high school to leave us, to leave with those skills. In the cycle for the, um, sophomore seminar, it's covered in, in that one cycle. But because we, then we transition to, to public speaking and then, i- i- you know, there's this different topics that are covered.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's not only dedicated to that, but it's, it's such an important need for the students because they're all going on to the workforce eventually.
Right.
And, uh, to, to go out there better prepared, um, having had a class here is certainly something we should look at.
And, and what do we do around career exploration, um, with, with students? Do, do we bring in people with different backgrounds to talk about potential career opportunities? To give kids a, an understanding of what, what's out there and what they could aspire to do so that they can then take the appropriate classes here at the high school and when they eventually go to college?
We have some special events through the, um, Blackstone Valley Collaborative where we have, um, we have the manufacturing day that the students go on, go out on each year. We do have some guests that come in by, uh, usually it's arranged by department where a department will bring some people in to talk to students, um, the science department, careers in science. I think we, I know with, uh, within guidance, they do the cl- career exploration inventory through their, the kids' Naviance accounts. But to bring in more guest speakers to talk with kids around career education, I think, you know, we have the one day, the PSAT day. That's a career day for seniors. And so, the seniors don't come in that day. They all, they choose to either go and visit a college or a career. A number of them do opt for a career because they have three college days anyway that they're excused from school. So, a number of students will go out, um, and they'll shadow with, oftentimes it's a friend of their parents or somebody that they know and they'll spend the day, um, with them. But I know, um, some schools have very formalized career, career, um, day program for their entire student body. So, that's something, and Dr. Tremblay and I had talked about that, um, at one point. So, certainly something that we can revisit and, and give our kids more opportunities to get out into the field. We have a lot of personalized programs. For example, um, we have the state student rep for, um, Special Olympics who goes out on an internship to Marlboro where the headquarters is. And she's there, um, in our seven day cycle, six out of seven days. And so, students can have career opportunities and internships, um, but a lot of it's very personalized at this point. But HTM, I mean, they're certainly having amazing, um, career and internship opportunities. And we'd like to see a lot more students have that.
Yeah, we've had discussions about that as well and thinking down the road for Milford High School uh, in terms of academy models where we have sort of, you know, you have an arts and sciences academy and begin to focus, uh, course pathways to getting exposure even as early as eighth grade. Uh, potential career paths students might want to take so they can really get a head start on their college. If they, if they have an idea. I mean, many students will still go on to liberal arts, you know, college. Uh, if they're not sure what they want to do. But the more exposure we can do that. And we'll, largely we'll rely on our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. So, one way we, we've begun work on that, Stephen DeVito, who, uh, manages our, runs our pathways program. Um, there are a number of students who may be interested, uh, for example, in HVAC, uh, or, you know, automotive, whatever it may be that who are not candidates for Blackstone Valley Tech, is to begin to create apprenticeship opportunities for the, that's sort of their customized schedules for those kids. That's motivating for them to come into school, much like you'd have a BBT schedule. They're in for one week, they're in the shop for a week. Um, but the shop becomes part of the community. So, the community sponsors that shop. I think there are maybe six or 700 a- a- area businesses that are through the Chamber of Commerce. And also with, I'll, I network with the, uh, the Blackstone Valley, uh, Chamber of Commerce as well. So, we have a pretty wide net, uh, of businesses that we work with at, at all levels from biomed to, uh, to real, you know, automotive and, and refrigeration, whatever it may be. So, we're looking to expand more of that. It's really for those kids who want to pursue, uh, you know, a career path and not a college path necessarily, want to create, open more doors for them.
That's great.
Yeah. So, we're well on our way.
One of the things we've talked about too is, um, how, how, how do we fit that into our graduation requirements? Um, a- as they exist now, we, we started talking about programs like pathways or like HTM. And, and how can we offer these unique programs and still meet all of our graduation requirements? And, and do we need to have a conversation about, well, we say, the students need X amount of electives at the school and students have to take four years of, of this and four years of that. Do, maybe we need to start looking at where, where is there some room outside of major academics? Because that, that needs to stay in place. But in some of our other arenas, is there room where we can, can say, well, we say that students have to take X amount of credits in, in, in this discipline. Maybe we can pare that back a little bit and say, your internship is going to serve in that capacity instead of you have to take that course here. So.
We want our graduates believing financially, financially literate. Ability to know how to interview, how to dress for an interview, how to have those communication skills. Let's see a public speaking capstone before they leave high school, uh, so they can, you know, how to collaborate, how to speak in front of a group. So, there's a lot of pieces we're putting together that is beyond just the, uh, you know, the traditional courses of study that we might have been familiar with as students ourselves in high school. And certainly, things have changed in the world to prepare that, that technology familiarity and, and expertise in a number of areas. But that's, that's our commitment.
Great.
Yeah. Carrie, you've done so well in, in, in laying this out tonight. I think that for members of the committee, even for myself, to hear the way you've articulated that through each of the disciplines, I thought it was very well done.
Thank you. And, and I, I will just, um, add that we're, we're talking about senior project. I mean, and that's a, a course that is a self-designed course by a student who would work with the teacher um, to develop a, a course, a curriculum, and a product at the end based on that student's college and career goal. So, we're, we're floating that out there, putting our feelers out there with our students to see if we have some students that would like to, um, to be a part of that, to pilot that. You know, the, a lot of times with the senior project, the, the end result meets a need in the community. So, there, there may be, uh, a need at the senior center for, um, may, maybe an elevator or there could be a stairwell that, that needs, is in disrepair and something needs to be done about it. So, the student develops a whole, um, curriculum on how they're going to go about developing this product or fixing, uh, whatever it is that, that they might want to repair. I know I worked with, um, a student a number of years ago who, um, wanted to go into architecture and the student built a podium for, um, I believe it was for the, the Lions Club needed a podium. And, and so, that was his project. He, from beginning to end, the end product was podium. But it was the process of how do you build a podium? Where do you get the wood from? How are you going to get things donated? What, how do you work with the Lions to understand what their needs are? And so, we're, we're, we have our feelers out about senior project and to talk about what it is, you know, a self-designed, um, classroom from a student, uh, working with the teacher. So, that would be really exciting too.
Anybody else?
And on top of all that, we have students, uh, here from China. We have students planning to go to China in June. We have students currently, are they home now from Italy and, and?
No, they're not home yet.
Students in Italy, we have students in Spain.
They're still there. They're coming home Saturday.
We have kids all over the world and from all over the world at the same time, uh, Mongolia. So, it's just, it's, it's just a great place to be.
It's a very exciting time at Milford High School. And our hockey team. I would be remiss if I did not say we broke.
No, no, no. Take, take it. Take it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. This is, this definitely.
Well, last night, um, our hockey team, uh, they, they made history, um, in Milford because they, um, they won the, in the quarterfinals last night. And, uh, we're headed to Brockton on Saturday. Um, we're playing Westwood. We have a, uh, a sign up tomorrow at lunch for our fan bus. So, we're hoping to get all the kids there. It's only $10 for the ticket, um, the bus and the ticket for students, um, to get into the game. But we're just so proud of our hockey team. It was, is an amazing game. It's up on YouTube, that winning goal in overtime. So, it was.
Well, Carrie, here's the added challenge for you because we have our, our technology team going to do a site visit for one-to-one technology to Westwood, uh, on Monday, I believe. And we, we, we love nothing more than to rub it in their face while they're there. So, if you can please make that happen for us.
Okay. I'm on it. I'm on it.
Carrie, just a, just a quick comment. Um, I had a gentleman stop to see me that has retired and became a part-time substitute at Milford High School. And he knew that I was on the school committee and he wanted me to know. He could not believe the courses that were offered in this high school. He said, it's just amazing. He said, if a child can't find the courses that they need at Milford High School, he said, I don't know how. He says, because they offer, and then he went on to name the languages and everything. So, great job.
Thank you so much. It's, uh, the work of our faculty and the, the investment of the students, the parents, the school committee. It's, Milford High School is an outstanding school and I, I'm just so proud to be the principal. And, and it's just a, a joy to be here tonight to present to you, um, our hopes and dreams for the future for our students.
Thank you. And with that, I'll take a motion to accept the Milford High School 2016 program of studies. Jen? Patrick? All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And the next agenda item is the By County Collaborative Program update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I've invited, um, Meg Bell Sido, Special Education Director, and Deb Friedman, uh, who wears a couple of different hats, Assistant Special Education Director, also our auto district coordinator. Uh, just to speak a bit, you know, we've taken a number of votes, or you've taken a number of votes as a committee about the By County Collaborative for various things, members of the committee in other towns who wish to be part of that board, members here who wish not to be part of that board, continue to have me represent the board. Uh, and I asked, uh, these two ladies to come tonight, just to give a little bit of an idea, a very brief update on what By County Collaborative is, what are the programs, especially around budget time, to have an understanding about our auto district placements of students, uh, what that means financially for Milford and what value we're getting for our, our membership there. So, I'll turn it over to the two of you just to give a update. Thanks for coming on.
No problem. Um, so basically, when we talk about the By County Collaborative, the first thing that you should know about, uh, which many of you already do, when a child is on an IEP, the placement page starts off with the least restrictive environment, which would be inclusion. That's our first goal. And then from there, if a child's not meeting with success there, they talk about partial inclusion. And then it gets more restrictive. So, then it talks about a subset replacement. And then from there, it could talk about, um, uh, a public day program. So, that's where we bring the By County Collaborative in. So, when all else does not work in the district, because ultimately, we always want to keep our students in district. And with the many programs we have in Milford, we're very fortunate. Um, we do a good job and, but there are those low incidence disabilities where we have to look outside of the Milford Public Schools. Um, as part of being in the By County Collaborative, there are 18 communities included, Milford being one. Um, Bob is on the Board of Directors. I'm on the operating committee. So, there's no fee to be a part of the By County Collaborative except that, uh, we participate in those monthly meetings. So, that's our benefit of being part of, um, their resources. If we weren't members on those boards, we would pay a fee, an additional fee, a non-member fee if we sent a student to one of the collaboratives. So, the tuition has two different, a non-member and a member fee. Um, so basically, right now, I was at a meeting this morning. The By County Collaborative has 192 students. Of the 192, we have about 12 students that attend the programs there. Um, and like I said, it's usually typically low incidence. Um, Deb can talk about specifically what disabilities currently, um, the By County Collaborative is helping us with, with our students um, as far as, um, which programs we participate in, in your annual report that I believe Bob gave everybody a copy of. Um, it describes each of the different programs they have. So, they have 15 different programs. I think we utilized five, Deb?
Yes.
We utilized five of those 15. Um, one of the other things you'll find in this report, it talks about comparing, um, the By County Collaborative tuition rate to a private. So, when you, again, to go down that continuum and you talk about a public day rate and then the next thing is a, um, private day. So, when a student goes to a private day versus a collaborative, there's a quite a difference in tuition. So, currently, the By County Collaborative averages about 46,000 for tuition per year without transportation. A private school would be about 70,000 per year. So, last year alone, based on the number of students we had there, which at that point in time, uh, we had about 17 students. Um, and many of them, um, graduated or moved on to the workforce. Um, we saved by using the By County Collaborative, I think, close to $500,000. Um, so, that was, that's quite a savings. And the, the By County Collaborative, the programs that they offer to these low incidence disabilities have been very beneficial so far for our students.
Yes, I have to say, um, it's great pleasure to be, represent Milford, to go to these programs. And like Meg said, um, most of the programs are in public schools. There's three programs that stand alone, which make, makes them public day, the ones that. The ones that are in a school are considered substantially separate, and that's what makes it unique. Because a student then is in this private, in this room, but has the opportunity for inclusion into that public school. So, the ones that stand alone are Finberg, and that's a therapeutic program. And then, we have two schools that are now standing alone because they were at Franklin High School that now is being renovated. So, they moved a, are a program that has medically fragile students that are, and then we have another program that has another therapeutic from middle school over in Walpole, so that stands alone. Like Meg said, we have, we're utilizing five of the fifteen programs. I have to say, when I go to the private schools, like the cottings or the crossroads, I truly try to encourage the parents to look at our collaboratives, or if we have a student that really truly needs to go out. Because a lot of the programs that these, this collaborative has, we have here in district. So, that is our last resort to send them out, but I try to step them down, and most of them are extremely happy. We are very blessed to work with this collaborative. It's really, it's truly a good program. There's the teachers are highly qualified. They have all the supports needed. It's great.
So, any questions?
Any questions? I just have one quick one. So, do the students leave just to go to a particular class and then come back to Milford? Or are the seventeen students, are they are they gone for the day like a traditional school?
Oh, they're placed there. They're placed there. It's a placement.
So, they're not, so they're Milford students placed out of district.
Okay.
And ultimately, the goal is always to bring them back.
Okay.
And over the years, we've done a really great job, or Deb's done a wonderful job of working towards bringing the student back to their home community. So, we always wanna make sure that we keep our students in Milford, because that's where we wanna educate them. In the instance that we can't, and we do send them out of district, the hope is always to bring them back to their home community.
And I have to say, the Byco staff is very supportive. I mean, of course, they would like the tuition, you know, yearly from us. But, you know, when I say, well, you know, they're making gains, this is something that we can service now that he's moving from maybe the elementary school into a middle school and we have our own therapeutic program, we just, they just say, he's yours. And, you know, it's really, they work very closely with us, so.
And when the students graduate, they graduate with a Milford diploma.
Yes.
And Deb, do you like as the team chair, as we would in locally, every school as a team chair? But for all of our students out of district, is that your, you act in that capacity, right?
I have to make sure that the IEP that they develop and the out-of-district placement is implemented and all the services are appropriate. So, I represent them as a Milford student, being educated in a different, in a different school.
I'd have to say out of roughly forty-four hundred students in the district, seventeen's a pretty low number. Good job.
Yeah, there's a total of about forty-two kids out of district now and other placements, but yes.
Still a great number.
It is.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Terrific job.
Thank you.
So, if you have any questions, once you go through their annual report, you know, feel free to let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
So, I have for the committee this evening, five warrants for the committee's approval. The first warrant is in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
And a motion from Patrick, second by Jen. All in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and nineteen cents.
Motion from Don, second by Joe. All in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
And a motion from Joe, second by Jen. All in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty thousand, seventy-one dollars and fifty cents.
Motion from Donnie, second from Patrick. All in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion from Jen, second from Joe. All in favor?
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting, as well as the February financial statement. And that's all I have for this evening.
That's it? All right, next agenda item, Report of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction.
So, Mike, I know you get very excited when we're about to do a PowerPoint. I hate to disappoint you, but Sarah Boyle is gonna be presenting for us tonight on the new Edwin Teaching and Learning platform that we're starting to pilot across the district, which means that it's gonna be much more articulate and the quality is significantly higher. We've used Edwin Analytics for MCAS analysis for years, and this is kind of the next phase of that, that gets into curriculum instruction assessment. And I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah to kinda talk this through.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, so, the first thing I wanna kind of introduce is what Edwin Teaching and Learning does. And it has four main functions. The first one is to provide a quick overview of student information, just a quick pop in, see what's going on with a particular student. If you need more information, you can obviously log into our X two system and get more details. But this just provides a quick glance for our teachers, just so they can do a quick check on students. It's also great for instruction and planning. It's a one-stop shopping for curriculum maps, lesson planning, sharing resources, and working collaboratively with their colleagues and peers. It also provides a plethora of assessment tools. It can offer online assessments. It offers paper and pencil assessments, scanning, test item banks built on both MCAS and NWEA, which is another major national test that goes on. It's the MAP test. And it also provides extensive data analysis on all of those assessments that are given, both ones that are given through the system and assessments that we give within the district that we can then just enter the scores. It'll also help us analyze those assessments as well. So, now, we're gonna talk a little bit more about those specific things. So, for student information, we can find their names. We can look at what grade they're in. We can look at their demographic information, what subgroups they belong to. And we can also look at their specific assessment data, going back as long as we've been using this particular system. So, once we start using it, teachers can then, from that date, go back to today and see all of that child's assessment data as it pertains to them. So, this is what teachers will see. This is not our student. This is a demo student from the Think Gate platform. But it shows different squares of information about that student. And over in the Assessment Results tile, you'll see those are all the tests that this demo student took. So, the teacher has access to all of that information, as well as principals and district officers and things like that. For instruction and planning, we are going to be looking at curriculum maps, year-long plans that the teachers and teams create, the unit plans that they tie to those curriculum maps, as well as individual lesson plans for each day or each topic that the teachers are teaching. They connect them up the ladder to make that curriculum map. So, when you're looking at the curriculum map, you can focus on the units, you can focus on the lesson plans. And they can also share them among one another. So, for example, one third-grade team could plan Unit One, another third-grade team could plan Unit Two, and they can share those plans with one another. So, they're not doing double duty. They also have a place to centrally locate all of their resources, their websites, their PDFs, their worksheets, the things that they find online. They can store them in this place, so they're not clicking on ten different websites and looking through ten different workbooks to find what they're gonna use for their lessons. They can also search databases of resources, particularly, right now, we have access to the PBS media resources. So, it offers different videos, biographies of people, episodes of Curious George, and things like that, that the teachers can link to their lessons and have quick access to. And it also provides model units, so the teachers can see what the district administrators in the state is looking for when they make these units and these lesson plans. This is a state model of what expectations are for the teachers to be creating. And finally, as I mentioned, it's an opportunity for teachers to share all of these resources that they're creating and linking to their lesson plans. They can share them in this platform. So, this is what the teachers will see, and this actually is our login. This is my login. So, down here in the bottom, those are all the state model curriculum. And there's some resources that I linked to my account about different things. And then, any curriculum maps and unit plans and lesson plans that are created are stored up there in those tiles up top. And when you click on them, they open up and you can see more of them. Oops. Let it go. What happened?
I'm not sure.
Hold on.
Oh, it broke.
I broke it. I don't know.
So, we've had teachers piloting this, and Sarah's kind of addressing this issue. We've had teachers piloting this and kind of getting in there, rolling up their sleeves and trying some different aspects of Edwin Teaching and Learning.
Try to hit enter, Mike.
Nope.
And so, we recently had a teacher, was it today or yesterday, that was doing one of the assessments? And you can actually put the assessments online, and it was an elementary teacher at Woodland, at the Woodland School.
Thank you.
And they were, they were basically rotating students through the assessment as different stations were going on or different centers were going on in the class. And what the teacher, with the advantage of using Edwin, is the teacher, it corrects all of the student responses and then analyzes the data. So, if you're looking at a couple of standards, it'll talk about strengths, some of the challenges that are happening as a class and by individual student, if you're looking at assessments over time.
Thank you. So, this is one of the model units, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're expecting. It got kind of wonky with the sizing, but this is the Common Core standards. And all the information that would help the teachers figure out what the students are expected to do, what topics they're gonna cover. And then, as they scroll through, this is the Understanding by Design framework that we are using throughout the district. So, this is a framework that's actually ingrained into the Think Gate system that the teachers can open up. All the squares are there, and they just type the information into it. But down here are all the lesson plans, the individual lesson plans that are linked to this unit. So, if I open one of them up, it tells the teacher exactly what to do. And all of this is already built into the website, and they can use it, they can either use this lesson if they're teaching this topic, or they can create one based off of this for the topic they are teaching. So, if I go back here. Let's try again. Okay. So, as Kevin mentioned, there's a big assessment component that goes into the Edwin Teaching and Learning. You can put in scores either through assessments given through this platform, or, for example, we give the grade, the G-made, PSATs, things like that. You can take those scores from those assessments and manually put them in here and still do data analysis on the results. You can also create assessments in here using the framework standards and the Common Core standards. You pick out the standard that you wanna assess, and you can create questions around that standard so that you can actually figure out which standards the students need support on, which ones they're mastering, and kind of go standard-based, as we're doing with our report cards. And they can actually take the test on the computer online, and you get immediate feedback about their results. Or you can do it with paper and pencil, bubble sheets, and you can scan them using a standard copy, scan, fax printer. You can scan them in, and the system reads them just as if the student had taken them online.
Is it the mouse that's throwing it off, I think? Because I can be your clicker if you need me to be.
I don't know. So, this is what a teacher sees when they log in to the assessment screen. They have access to all of the assessments that they create, as well as their colleagues. You can share them with one another. And also, access to the different items. You can look at specific items based on specific standards and MCAS results. This is that teacher Kevin was talking about, so she started giving her assessment on the computer, and this is the screen she sees. So, she's able to see who's taken the test, and right here, you can see this particular student was either absent or didn't do it. And this particular student is locked, which means that they did something that they weren't supposed to do, and the test locked them out. So, what that could mean is that they opened up a new window, or they closed something they weren't supposed to close. So, she can go back in and reset his test, so he can continue taking it, but it will lock a student out, just like Park will, if they do something they're not supposed to do. And this is what the students see when they take the test online. It shows up one question at a time. And they use the buttons across the bottom to progress through the test, just like they would on Park. So, this is a great way to get our students ready to take those online assessments. And this is what they see when they do that locked-out thing. Actually, we'll pop up a warning screen and lock them out. And then, finally, for data analysis, we have lots of different results that the teachers are able to access. They can figure out which students are at risk, proficient, or mastered, based on lots of different fields. They can assess particular questions on the test, which ones, you know, the students got wrong, which answer the most students chose. And then, they can do the regular analysis that we do for our MCAS when we use the other side of Edwin, the Edwin Analytics. And they can break it down by subgroups, and they can actually print report cards based on the standards that the students have been assessed on. And then, the admins have district access, so they can look at the whole grade level, the whole school. They can look at it on a broader basis than the teachers can. So, this would be an item analysis that the teachers could look at, and the green is the correct answer, and it shows how many students answered each answer. And then, this is the report card. The top one is comparing two teachers, and the bottom one is comparing each section that those teachers teach. So, it allows for different comparisons on different levels. And then, you can even break it out farther and compare individual students and get those results as well. And finally, you can look at specific standards. So, this is a math test, and it has the list of the math standards, and it's comparing the school's performance on those standards to the entire district's performance on that standard. So, if you had three or four elementary schools, you could compare each of the elementary schools to see which one might not be doing so well or which ones really succeeding at a particular standard. And that's it.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions.
What are the means by which data finds its way into that database?
It can happen a couple of ways. The students either take the test online using tests that the teachers input to the system. They can take a paper pencil version of that same assessment. Or they can take a regular assessment that the teachers already use, and then the teachers type in the score, just like they would for X-tile for a grade book.
So, that's student data. What about the other data that we spoke about in regards to curriculum?
The demographics and such.
Yeah, the curriculum information that we can pull up.
The curriculum information has to be input by the teachers. It should already be created. They should already have curriculum maps, unit plans, things like that. So, it's just a matter of inputting it into the system.
And who would be that input?
Probably the teachers.
We're trying, we're figuring that out.
With what extra time?
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out right now, the best way to approach it, because we wanna make some updates to some of our maps. And we're trying to figure out the best path to kind of get broad input, but also respecting people's time.
I'm enthusiastic about the opportunity to do analysis and student assessment. I am less enthusiastic on another burden on our teachers right now, who already have, who already have other requirements to take away their time with teaching students. And so, if we're creating an assessment, which is wonderful, that allows us to group data and segment data, and the data person understands that, it needs to relieve enough time such that the input of the data doesn't become burdensome. And we can't keep adding on layers of technology that are requiring our teachers' times, which is taking time away from their face time with students. And so, I worry, when I see something like this, that we get excited about the opportunity that it gives us, and we're not necessarily concerned about the time constraints required to make the opportunity come to fruition.
The goal of this program is ultimately to reduce the amount of time teachers spend with with data, like looking at a test. So, you put the data in, and it's there immediately.
I can see that, yeah, I can see that.
You know, there's time. There's absolutely gonna be upfront time that's going to be taken, and I think it's gonna happen gradually over time. We're not gonna go from, you know, zero to a hundred miles an hour within a couple of months. It's probably gonna be, to be honest with you, a multi-year process to get it to a point where we really want it to be. And when you look at, when you think about curriculum mapping, for example, a big, a big platform out there, and I'm blanking on the name right. Atlas is a big platform, was one of the big kind of curriculum mapping tools, and a lot of.
And a lot of districts who've engaged in the um Atlas program, it takes them three to five years to really get it where they want it to be. And they're still beyond that kind of playing with it and tweaking with it, which is what you wanna do with curriculum, you don't want it to be static. Um, I think with the assessment piece that's that's really beneficial and there's a number of additional question banks that we can pull from for different standards. And I think is, you know, if the state does move forward with Park, I think Park question banks will become developed as well. Is that a teacher could literally, and and Sarah walked the administrative team through this and we're gonna do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
We were we were gonna do it in February, but we lost it to a snow day, but we're gonna do it in March now. Is um work with the curriculum team leaders and just show them, it's amazing how quickly a teacher could pull together a great assessment
Mm-hmm.
based on the standards and then share that assessment with other teachers. So instead of every teacher coming up with a an assessment, you know, pick the standard, pick the strand. One teacher could say, hey, I've got this great assessment based on this particular standard, I'm gonna share it out with you. And so again, it's another time-saving piece. That's not to say there isn't an upfront, an upfront um build time that you're gonna be doing, but ultimately I think within a couple of years, this is gonna be a huge time saver.
What what grades and classes are we targeting for this type of both?
It covers all the grade levels, um and it actually has built into it um capabilities to monitor, they call them credentials, but they're basically sort of what Carrie was speaking about earlier, um career readiness skills. You can give the students awards for things like computer technology, web page design. You can give them recognition for that so that they can um print out basically a list of the skills that they have and include that on their resumes and their college applications and things.
I'm 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 less concerned about giving awards, I'm more concerned about what about subjects and classes that aren't conducive to multiple choice testing.
That you can do non-multiple choice testing, um that with the teacher that I helped create an assessment, it took her probably ten minutes to create her assessment. And that was her inputting the questions, not using the test banks that they have. But she had, I believe it was five multiple choice questions and it automatically scored those. And then she had three written response questions and she went back into the system, she said click, 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 right, wrong, right, wrong, right, wrong. And it analyzed those results as well.
What about a free response question that requires teacher's notes so the student knows why their answer isn't correct?
I don't know if it allows teachers to provide feedback. I know that it um has, you can attach a rubric to an assessment item, so you could score them based on different criteria. Um, and that would allow you to kind of convey some of those responses that a teacher would need to get.
So this wouldn't be applicable for say a high school advanced college level honors level English class where a paper needs to be graded? Or say perhaps for a physics class where an equation needs to be corrected?
You you could still use the system, but you'd have to, again, like like Sarah said, you'd you'd.
Add more layers of work for the teacher.
Well, no, I wouldn't say add more layers of work for the teacher, I'd say if it's a, it's if it's like a mixed test in terms of multiple choice and open response questions.
Mm-hmm.
The the computer will automatically tabulate the multiple choice and just like a teacher does now, they'd still have to go in and
Mm-hmm.
because the computer, you know, it's just not gonna be able to respond to an essay or an open response or like a, you know, five, a five paragraph or a longer composition.
I just wanna make sure that we're thinking through all of the pieces of this. Um, I think it's easy to get excited about technology and layering in new technology, especially when the output is such good output, you know, and it's exciting output. Um, but I think that we have to make sure that we're thinking through
Mm-hmm.
the potential negatives, um because I don't want that excitement to turn into a tool that doesn't get used properly. Uh, and then we have some teachers using it, some teachers aren't using it, we have um uneven assessments and so the comparison pool, we're looking at different students in different grades or perhaps in different school buildings, one teacher has a level of proficiency that another teacher does not have. And so we have some assessments that are correct, we have other teachers that are making multiple choices that are easy to manage because they can just, and we know it doesn't happen, right? But we have some teachers that make multiple choices that are easy to manage, so they can use the system. And I would hate to think that we start teaching in such a way as to make the system easy to use because the time constraints are such that teachers feel they have no other option but to do that.
I would say to address that to an extent is that once the initial work has been put into it for, as Kevin was saying, the assessments can pretty much all be created as the teacher goes along, just like we create assessments as we go along for paper, paper pencil assessments. That's what we're doing now. And you tweak them as you go along and the assessments are scored, are stored in here, so they can go back and say, oh, well, this was not a great question, I'm gonna take this one out, substitute another one. And they can do that. And then it'll take longer to get the curriculum and the units and the lessons all in there, but once they're in there, they're there. We don't have to redo it next year, they're stored for us. And if you find that a lesson didn't work for you, it's just a matter of switching out that particular lesson. It it will take some initial work, but I think down the road it will eliminate a lot of that, oh, I gotta type up my lesson again or I have to do this again or I lost this binder and I don't know where it is or I can't find this resource, this workbook page, everything is here.
That's certainly one potential outcome, I could postulate several other outcomes that would have a less positive impact on our teaching. Uh, and so I guess my concern is, and my concern I'm speaking to you now, is that we analyze these thoroughly and we try and find the pinch points and we identify them now before we start rolling out a system. Um, in that way, instead of answering questions, we find out what some of the results are, how the system actually gets used.
Mm-hmm.
And and we have a a solution that addresses some of these issues before they pop up.
And that's part of why we're we're doing um kind of a a pilot program this spring where teachers are kind of engaging in a lot of the areas and we're seeing, you know, what's really working, what kind of the low hanging fruit is and what's a little more challenging and where the learning curves are. And and Sarah's working with all the schools with different groups and different departments and this is just starting to happen because I think we got the system, um actually, we we were approved to use the system maybe a month and a half ago.
Mm-hmm.
So I I don't think we're ta- like I said, I don't think we're taking a approach where we're saying, here's Edwin, have at it. We're we're providing training, we're gonna provide support and we're, it's it's kind of like a rolling, it's it's a, it's 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 a kind of a rolling process to get it out there. And we're not going to say, hey, you've never used it before, here's a hundred requirements that we're gonna put in place.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna slowly work into it and we're gonna build experts across the district who are gonna be able to support their colleagues.
Just having used a program like this previously or currently actually, one of the benefits, um well, two be- big benefits, I think, if Edwin works the same way that Atlas does, is that it allows for collaboration um in a way, both face to face and electronically that teachers haven't had to this point. So you may have teachers at Memorial on Brookside teaching the same grade level who never have an opportunity to interact with each other. And I know some of the work, and I think this is why it takes a really long time, is that teachers have to have time to get together in person, they have to have time to be able to communicate electronically. Um, so it allows for more consistency, which I think we hear parents asking for all the time, how come this second grade is doing this and the second grade is doing that? And without that kind of, hate to put it this way, but in your face, work with a Common Core within mass frameworks with teachers, they tend to not always teach to every standard that they should. So I think this helps especially because of the way it's pre-populated. It helps teachers ensure that they are hitting all the standards that they're supposed to. And I will say that one of the biggest pitfalls is when it's not rolled out in a thoughtful way. Because if it's rolled out, like, you know, like Kevin said, here's your job, do it now, the teachers are, they're gonna balk and and it's a shift for them. They're not used to seeing curriculum developed this way. Um, but over time, once they understand the way that it rolls out and the benefits of actually seeing their curriculum laid out for them and and the fact that they're pre-populated pieces in there, I think will be a benefit. With Atlas, it's not that way and teachers are are, they're scrambling to try to get things into that. But to have those model maps in there already, I think is going to be helpful to teachers and they're gonna feel better about thinking they're hitting the standards that they may not have been previously. Um, even though we say Common Core, without it really being there and without a principal or a curriculum director saying, we're gonna work on curriculum mapping today, we're gonna get to this this task now. It tends to go by the wayside for exactly the reason, because there's so many other things that teachers are doing every day. So I think at the end of the day, if timelines are flexible and teachers are given the time, it does have a great potential to improve
Oh, sure.
the consistency and the collaboration amongst the teachers.
Well, like any complex system though, the the devil's in the details. And the the execution is is the challenge.
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
And it's the problems with the execution that we have to be very thoughtful about and that we have to prepare for and arrive for alternative roles.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's why we're looking for feedback from teachers and we're really looking at this as a collaborative process where people are saying, hey, this is really something that's gonna work for us right now and this is something that we're gonna need a lot of support on and we're gonna listen to that.
Teachers aren't generally, in Milford, in my experience, shy about telling us what they think, so. They'll uh, and and it's invaluable input, so I I agree that.
It it really is, cause it works to be a collaborative process.
What's what works well in Milford is is piloting, is trying things in small scale and then correcting mistakes before we go large scale and that's usually where things die.
Works well everywhere.
Yeah.
That's the best way to do anything.
The only way I can, the only reference point I have in Milford in terms of this is is Milford, so it's worked well here and we'll continue to do that, but it's a very, it's a point very well taken.
Yeah.
The only thing I wanted to add, if you don't mind, is assessments aren't always paper pencil. And so I know on Atlas, there's a whole menu, a different kind of assessments, so I can't imagine that that would only be used
No, that's here as well.
that Edwin would be the only use um for assessments. So it may be a presentation or oral report or something like that that you could actually re- reference in there that it's going to be done, but that the assessment wouldn't be made, I assume Edwin works the same way.
Right, our goal isn't to turn everything into a multiple choice question because
Right.
then we're not preparing students for the next level or the real world
Right. Right.
um or college or careers. Um, so and and we're always gonna put an emphasis on writing and we're always gonna put an emphasis on some of those other, you know, those those those, as you mentioned Patrick, those, some of those courses that might not be captured in a four or five response kind of a question.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, that's definitely not the direction we wanna go in.
Yeah.
We really wanna build those higher order thinking skills and critical thinking skills.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, we wanna offer teachers an opportunity to have analysis at a push of a button.
Right.
To hit a, to hit on a lot of those kinds of skills and even be able to look at assessments over time, whether they can be captured in the Edwin system. Or it's it's assessed kind of the old fashioned way where they're they're reading through the paper, giving um giving feedback that's um very specific and and the inactionable to students.
No, I mean, that's the huge benefit, right? If you have a database capturing where the trends are and delivering those trends to teachers, that saves the time, that makes their lives easier and it allows us to better instruct students so they're catching up on some of the things that they're missing on, and I absolutely agree with that.
And Craig Consigly actually said to me, um, one of the first couple of months that I was here, he said, I would really want like a baseball card of each student I have in my building so I could pull up that card and really get a sense of how they're doing. And this this actually will provide that. And again, it's gonna take some time to get there, but it will give give um teachers, principals, um, you know, anybody who has the appropriate access um based on kind of their connection to the student, an opportunity to really look at that student's growth over time, where the strengths are, where the challenges are. And as we move kind of into a more of a one-to-one um computing kind of platform in the future, it's gonna really allow for the personalization of learning, which is really what we wanna be, so we can really kind of differentiate instruction. Um, and this is gonna help facilitate that.
Let me.
You know, j- just to add to Patrick's point, so I mean, for this to be successful, successful, you're gonna really have to drive that behavioral change, you know, with with the with the teachers and make sure that everybody is putting this, you know, the time and effort to get the content in there. Cause I mean, it's it's great content, um, but it's just like any other software uh program. The thing that makes me concerned to Pat's point is when you're manually putting data in, nah, things can go horribly wrong rather quickly. And once bad data's in there, it's gonna skew everything.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, when you're in asking people, you know, you're talking about dozens of people all adding uh content into a system, uh, it does raise a red flag, uh, but you know, technology evolves and hopefully, you know, this group is already working on a way to automate that process, you know, take a spreadsheet and populate everything, um, you know, but it is a step in the right direction. So, you know, obviously this is something that we've all been looking for 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 years. It looks like there's something, but uh Pat, you know, I I commend you for, you know, seeing beyond the the nice fluffy package and saying, wait a minute, there's a, there's a lot behind this. And so if you need our support in making sure that we get the behavioral change that we need to to make it successful, you just need to make sure you keep us posted on this, you know?
Absolutely, we'll give, we'll give updates probably, not not every meeting, but maybe every three, three to six months, we'll we're actually seeing some movement on it.
Right.
And we're and we're starting to see teachers use it and try and try out different aspects of it.
Good.
And and I think, um, you know, what I'm hearing from Sarah, cause Sarah's working with um the teachers in the in the various buildings um and supporting them through this process is that as people are using it, they're they're liking it more and more.
Good.
Because they they just see all the different areas of potential with it.
Yeah.
And as it is right now, we're kind of leaving it to be teacher-driven. We're not saying, here it is, use this, we, you know, we want everybody to do this. We sent everybody the information about the system, we sent them their logins and everything so that they could access the system and go in and play around. And now I'm basically waiting for them to come to me and say, can you help me make a test? Can you help me put my lesson plan in? I'm waiting for them to show some interest so that it doesn't feel forced onto them. I want them to feel invested in the system and not like something's being pushed upon them.
A- and and on top of that, we're doing targeted trainings across the district. I think in March, Woodlands, um during the half day, the Woodlands, Sarah's trained the Woodland staff.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yep.
She's already done a presentation for the administrator, she's gonna do a presentation for the curriculum team leaders and she's gonna start presenting to, depending on the grade level, um departments or grade level teams to kind of, you know, see where their interest lies, to see where they can start kind of digging into the system. And I think um, I think as people use it more, they're gonna get more comfortable with it and it and it's gonna start to really take off. And in 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 parallel to that is, we're gonna have to figure out, um, and and again, this is a work in progress, is how do we best create a collaborative process where a lot of voices are at the table for the curriculum mapping piece, but at the same time, get the curriculum maps into kind of a uniform format in a place where we can kind of publish it out to the public as well.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Forget your phone.
Okay, next agenda, I do.
You wanna grab that stuff from the bowl there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Are you using this now or no? No, no, I think they'll just.
It'll just be all right.
I don't wanna, can I get up?
Athletic Subcommittee.
Uh-oh. I feel like this is adversarial now, what just, what just happened?
That was fun, it's gonna be fun. It's showing to Altai. New weakness.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll let you start off.
Alright, so Dawn and I got together with Peter today, the uh new athletic director. Um, we've kind of let him do his thing since he's been, you know, hired and get a feel of what he has to do. We sat down with him later, uh this today, earlier today, just to talk about how he feels, what we can do to help and kind of where he sees the athletic department going. Um, he brought up some good things, um some incentives that he's been working on with the students. Um, he got some goals and visions that he had created. One of the things that was pretty cool that he had brought up to us, he has this athletics championships, championship expectations. Um, a little slogan that I guess he, what do you see, these around the halls or?
We've got taped around the halls everywhere.
Every student has this, you know? Um, it says relentless pursuit of excellence, championship, sportsmanship and Scarlet Hawk twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Um, pretty good motto for the sports department, I would say. Um, students are adapting to this pretty well. Um, kinda covers, you know, you're a student, you're a Milford Hawk, you're an athlete throughout your whole core, on the field, off the field. You represent Milford and as a sports athletic person. Um, also what he has done and implemented is um student of the week or Scarlet Hawk of the week. Where it would be one male, one female, they have their picture taken, they have interview with Milford TV, they're blasted all over Twitter. So it's a whole uplifting feel-good type deal for these students. And what we were talking about earlier today too, um, try to, you know, get like a huge picture of the students.
As an example.
Is one of them, I I don't remember who took these pictures, but um get one here of the student of the week, uh athlete of the week and plaster it down in the gymnasium. Um, let everyone see that these were the ones that have excelled for that week. And what he's told us too, it's not just star student or the star athlete, it's it's everybody, it's the one that tries the hardest. It's the one that got that goal-winning hockey game score or whatever. It's everyone gets the chance to prove themselves and be a part of the athletic department.
Yeah, and and he's doing some really great things. I talked to Craig Consigly at the, you know, the uh luau spaghetti dinner tonight. And for example, he's having the athletes, some of the um, some of the um captains and and um seniors, they're gonna go down to Woodland and uh meet with the kids, read to the kids. Uh, Craig was telling me he's gonna give the kids like these little autograph books to go around and and meet with them, stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, i- and he he also is putting together a leadership program, which I I really thought was fantastic. So it's, he wants the captains to really be beyond leaders and just just on the field. So he's trying to think of programs that he can put the captains through to really uh enhance that leadership role and so that the younger kids can also look at what they're doing and get excited about it. Uh, he's really into going out to uh, you know, youth um programs and and bringing the, like the freshmen and the sophomores together and and let them uh suit with types of programs they're putting in place. He was talking to us about, you know, the stuff that we did at the middle school, that how we launched the SARCA program, but he has like ten other programs
Ten of those, ten of the sports.
he's looking to launch in the next year or two.
Three years. Three years.
And um, you know, we we heard about the the hockey team, but you know, just doing something like putting together that fan bus. Like he was saying, you know, there's so many freshmen sophomores that would love to go, but they don't have a ride, you know, so to to involve everybody and and really build that excitement about around athletics here, it's. It's really exciting. He's got more energy than anybody I've ever seen, you know.
Yeah, he's he's done a lot of, he's really into this and I I think we did a good job of selecting the right guy for this job. He's really all about this.
Yeah.
So we we feel as a subcommittee that, you know, he's really up and running. Um, and and we talked to him, you know, maybe we don't need to have the subcommittee, but. Uh, you know, he, I think what he'd like to do, Mike and, you know, you know, again, I'm not gonna be here when you guys do the subcommittees, but uh, one of the things we talked about was. Just keep this subcommittee together like till the end of September. So that way, he's had one cycle with each season, you know, um. You know, each group under his belt, um, but you know, if everything's running the way it is right now, you know, there's probably no need to keep this, keep this rolling, but. Keep it to an an email or just a phone call or or a monthly email update to the committee or something that maybe he had an interest in or needs some help or issues or something. Yeah. But he's really focused on the leadership side, getting more kids involved, uh, you know, hands-on, he's. I really took my hat off to him 'cause, you know, he's put all this in place in such a short period of time. That's really impressive. He's also, also wh- what I didn't know, and what he said was he couldn't believe we didn't have was a fitness center. Um, am I am I right? Yeah, he's got some of the locker rooms that he had done near the football, if I remember. Half of them are wiped out 'cause they don't use them and they've built the a fitness center for for everybody to use. And he was, he said that that was one of the things that he didn't believe that we didn't have, because a lot of every other school has it. Now, we're gonna have it, which is cool. Yeah. And kudos to to Lenny for finding the equipment or supporting that piece of it. Right. Kudos to Rob Quinn for, you know, setting that room up, uh, and getting this ready. But it's really to allow, you know, that we have a weight room, but I mean, that's strength. Uh, and conditioning, you know, what he wants is, you know, the cardio, you know, folks that really wanna focus on cardio and and uh, have that. Set up as part of the fitness center. And he's also talking about having that, um, you know, supported year-round, so even during the summer and uh, offseason. You know, that's what he's promoting. You're an athlete, you know, you you should be down here all the time, uh, really conditioning yourself. But to me, as a parent, the thing that I loved about it's the on and off field and it's the, to his slogan, Scarlet Hawk twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. It's taking that leadership, taking what you're learning in athletics, uh, taking it, uh, you know, back to your home, to your community and everything else like that, so. It's really good and it's. He also wanted wanted us to plug the the athletic website that's up and running too. He says it's it's brand new, up and running and everyone should get get into it. It has all the schedules and everything you're looking for. Yeah, he says he has, even on his Twitter, he has over three hundred people uh, following him and uh, he gives a couple tweets a day. Of course, Joe and I don't know what a tweet is, but. Right. So anyway, that's that's it on this.
My comment on the fitness room was really interesting when I was talking to him about that. He said it was one of the other advantages of what do you do with the child that just doesn't want traditional phys ed. Class that you're teaching at that time, that child would wander over and sit on the bleacher, can go into the fitness room, get on a bike, you know, get on a Stairmaster, you know, something that.
Right.
Because of technology inspires them and next thing you know, they're getting exercise. I mean, talk about forward thinking.
Yep. Right.
Unbelievable, yeah.
But the fitness center too is also something that can be used by the community, the phys ed, you know, anybody, so.
Right.
Teachers, anybody. Joe. So he's doing, he's doing a really good job.
Yeah, and I. Yeah, and I was just gonna say, to your point, you you can't help but get excited when you talk to this guy. Um, and he's he's laid out a great vision and I'm really excited to see where where this goes from here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, you know, to your point, Don, he's doing a lot of things to help build character, right? Um, and he's doing a lot of things to help create a very positive culture throughout the entire district that is ultimately gonna have. Um, you know, a great impact on our on our students going forward, so it's exciting.
So that's what we got and it was, it was overdue, but you know, we needed to talk to him, we just wanted to let him get his grip on for us, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Nice job. Policy Subcommittee.
No updates, we haven't met since the last meeting and I think I have to go back and look at the calendar, which is supposed to be the uh, Monday the ninth.
The eighth, right?
But we might have a conflict, 'cause I think we might have a um, a uh.
Is it negotiations or budgets?
I I think it's a negotiation meeting that night.
Something.
I have one one ninety-eight.
Uh, Monday the ninth?
The meeting that.
I don't think so.
The meeting.
There's that.
I got ready.
Teacher that?
Maybe have that night.
No, there's, there's no conflict on the night.
No.
I'm probably about.
No, okay, alright, so then our next one's the ninth.
No, it's not. Could. Could it's all pulling our phones out.
Hi, do we have it on March nine, this policy subcommittee?
Yes, let me have that.
Right, but we don't have a contract negotiation that night. That's okay, no, alright.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, so the next one is the Monday, March nine.
It's February nine, we had to cancel because of that or something.
And Wellness, we meet uh, March fourth. Safety and Security, we meet March second, so I'll have a lot to say at the next meeting. Middle School East Reuse.
Scooter, Scott.
Yeah. Woodland School Building Project.
Um, so, believe it or not, despite the snow, um, still on track to put machinery in there end of March. Um, still on track.
That's funny.
Yeah, yeah, still uh, still on track for um, a June twenty sixteen completion, uh, substantial completion date. Seven thousand dollars under budget.
Awesome.
Which is great. Um, and that's that's really, Bob unless you have anything else to add?
No.
Yeah, pretty good.
Good.
Pretty good, really happy.
Need the snow to melt.
You just need the snow to melt. Well, I mean, the equipment will get in there.
We should see how excited Craig is.
He'd think, oh, but it can get in there, so.
Yeah, Craig's like, that's alright, we can start knocking down trees.
Well, you know, I mean, what's what's nice is, you know, we're not in a position where we have a drop dead date that the building has to be done, you know, by August twenty-ninth.
Right.
Twenty sixteen, I mean, if if it's another month, it's another month, I mean, you know, we just walk the kids over when we're done, so.
Right.
Yeah, but it's it's nice, it's nice knowing that we're still on schedule and that we're under budget, right? On schedule, under budget, that's what people wanna hear and that's what we are, so it's a good thing.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you. Next item, future agenda items? Anybody have anything they want added?
Yes.
I have a, just a couple of schedule things, um, school schedule. Um, the one is, uh, my wife had heard on public radio. Um, this concept that they're doing up in New Hampshire, they're called Blizzard Bags. And um, these are sort of prepackaged pieces of curriculum. So when the students have days that they can't go to school, they're staying on task, they're staying on curriculum and they're finding a way to replace the days the students missed. Um, so they're not losing so many days. So I I would like to think about those and then I would also like to think about um, what we could potentially do about. Who wants to hear it, using April vacation to replace some of this time on task. Um, and I don't know if it's something that we can do this year, 'cause we don't have a plan for it, right? But I'm thinking that, we all know, everyone in this room knows that adding five days to the end of the school year is not the same as having five days in the middle of the school year. And so, um, if we add some sort of a contingency plan, especially with all the assessments that we have to take with our students, um, if we have some contingency plan where we can take time, save for April vacation. And for students who do have vacation scheduled that will be going away, we have some sort of a Blizzard Bag type option where they can get that material a couple of weeks before they go. And the material is due a couple of weeks after they come back, so we can keep school open if we need to, we can keep students who who are scheduled to go away on task and working a couple of hours a day. So they can not miss those days. Uh, I I I think it could pay potential benefits. Now, are we gonna have another year like we've had this year and are we gonna get another hundred and ten inches of snow? Maybe not, but um, I think that this is, this can be instructive as to how we could s- structure our curriculum and structure our school time to try and account for some of these things. Uh, 'cause again, that time at the end of the year is just not the time that we need. We need time before the end cast. I I mean.
You know, and Patrick, to your point, it's, you're just talking about putting some proact, you know, be proactive and put a plan in place in case.
Yeah. Right.
Something happens, right?
Right.
I mean, Bob's pretty good about being mean and making the kids go to school, but you know.
Yeah.
Three feet of snow, though, we're gonna drown the water. Yeah, right, but but I, you know, it would probably be a smart idea to, because it seems like we talk about it every year, so why not put some sort of a plan in place that we can act on.
Yeah.
Um, instead of having to scramble.
Yeah, just, if I can comment just on that for for a moment, uh, Lynn Ellis that did reach out to me as well. Um, so first on the on the school calendar.
Yeah.
Uh, there's about thirty percent of the districts in Massachusetts start after Labor Day. Uh, so for those districts, it's, if this, this one particularly, it presents a huge problem.
Sure.
As you start to run into out of days in the end of June and people looking at taking away um, religious holidays like Good Friday, for example, or or carving into vacations. Um, not only is it the impact of students who may not be in schools, the family vacations, but also staff who have family vacations that they schedule in advance and pay for trips and. And sort of forward thinking as to what we could possibly do with the calendar and now there are a number of districts that are moving toward a um, a a longer break in December. And eliminating anything, eliminating February and keeping April. Uh, this one, so there's a number of potential, uh, and I'll I'll prepare for the committee some of what's going on around the state.
Please do.
For the next meeting in tandem with our calendar discussion.
Yep.
Uh, that, as far as the Blizzard Bags, I think it's a great concept. In fact, I think we're probably about ten years away, maybe sooner in some districts, uh. From really having a sort of a flipped classroom where teachers are able to communicate even with students at home while they're at their house on their device and give out lessons and have a a meaningful school day. Even, you know, asynchronously or you just virtually. Um, right now, the state still has the hundred and eighty day requirement. So a Blizzard Bag could be, um, and it is, it is, it is being used, as mentioned, in New Hampshire and other states. Um, so students have some kind of focused work to do while they're while they're out of school, but it doesn't count, it doesn't replace a school day of a hundred and eighty days.
No, that's why a couple of my idea of eliminating the April break, providing the bags for those students who have vacation scheduled who can, then we have the majority of our students in school.
Yeah.
And we have the students whose parents take them out of class to go on vacation, have the opportunity to make up that work.
Right, I think it's a good idea. I I just wanna make clear that, you know, we still have a hundred and eighty days, in case people who are listening might be thinking a Blizzard Bag would replace a school day.
Right, no, it would have to replace it in conjunction with eliminating it for vacation, which is, which people might chase at, but our our concern here is making.
Right, yeah.
Students prepared to take the assessments that they're legally obligated to take.
Right.
Um, and then the the second part of that, Mike, is, uh, we've spoken about this before and I would mention this to the negotiation committee. Um, all of the research that I've been reading, or some of the research that I've been reading, uh, reinforce reinforces something that we already know. Um, teenagers go to bed later and they wake up later and elementary students go to bed early and they wake up early, except that's not how we bring them into the buildings, right? We bring in the high schoolers first thing in the morning and we bring in the elementary schools later in the afternoon. And some school districts are starting to flip that schedule where the high school kids are starting later and the elementary's kids are starting earlier. I think that's something that we should that we should look at. I'm a big fan of, you know, working with what nature is giving us and so if we have teenagers who wanna go to bed at eleven and, you know, wake up at eight o'clock. And we have elementary students who wanna go to bed at seven and wake up at five thirty, like mine do, um, you know, i- if we can take advantage of some of that and and get more time on task, more quality time for high school students. Um, I I I don't know, I think that that might be something we should look very seriously into.
The the only, I I think the only reason why we haven't done that is, I think there's uh, an impact on the athletics. You know, the timing, I I don't know. I know it's always an issue to get people, you know, from, 'cause a lot of the coaches are in different schools and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Although, trust me, listen, uh, you know, having raised six kids, it would have been great to have the high school kids be able to drive, you know, the younger kids and.
Yeah.
And those types of things too, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely an interesting concept and something we we should talk through, 'cause there are pros and cons to it. Uh, the the one thing that sort of stands up out in my mind is, um. You know, there are a lot of families where the older child gets home first and then is able to watch the younger child after they get home and now now they wouldn't have that opportunity, so that that might create some issues for parents.
That's concerned, sure. Sure.
But it's definitely worth the discussion.
Yeah, we're looking into it, absolutely. Anything else?
Uh, well, just a quick question, Bob, do they have study halls at high school anymore?
No.
Those are all gone.
Yeah, we can't have study halls any longer. They don't count in time of learning, time of learning, time.
Any old business?
I got something, Mike. Um, I I've heard some some comments recently about um, the schools not being, uh. Not making the necessary investments in technology, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, um. You know, improving the infrastructure and building that foundation is 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 a priority for us and and as all all you know, um, our funds are are somewhat limited, so. Um, it's important that we have the proper plan in place and that, um, when we do make an investment, we do that that thoughtfully. Um, and, you know, the past year, we've definitely made made some progress, um, and I think we can see the light at the end of the tunnel now. Um, if you go back to last year, we had World Bank come in and do that very detailed assessment. Since then, the town's created the IT department, they hired, they brought Paul in. Paul's made a lot of progress since he's come on board. My understanding is the town has now hired a few additional folks in uh, into that IT department as well, which will certainly help going forward. Um, and just recently, we had another critical milestone where um, Kathy successfully secured the E-rate as well. Um, so, and she was, you know, thankfully got that application in in time before the the deadline, but that's gonna save us a substantial amount of money going forward, so. Um, you know, I think we're headed in 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 the right direction now, um, and it's important that, you know, we continue to have that dialogue with with the town and continue to work closely with with Paul and. And with Rick and 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 others, um, to help continue to move this forward and put the proper structure in place and be able to provide support not only to the town but to the schools as as well. I think that's gonna require some some dialogue, but we can certainly, um, work work to just keep that line of communication open and, you know, it looks like we continue to make some progress.
Okay, just one question on that. Has has that mapping been done yet for the schools? Does it, Kathy or anybody know?
Uh, the update that I asked Paul for, um, I'm not clear on that. I would say, I say it's in process still. It was done, it was a few weeks back. Um, again, I don't have the memo in front of me, but.
Yeah, I know, it was just the snowstorms and everything, I didn't know.
Yeah, with the number of users, they didn't have a good a good read on the number of systems they were trying to access, the wireless, the, you know, how it's ma- it's beyond my ability, but we had the next meeting. Paul is scheduled, uh, to come to the school committee and give an update on that.
Okay. Okay.
As well as, you know, what plans does he have for the the fiber network and where are we with, you know, the his plan.
Okay.
So I I'm sure that we'll get an answer from Paul and that if not before, I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to old business also?
Absolutely.
Um, we had talked at the last meeting when Mark came, Mark Shane, regarding the finances and what we're looking at in terms of funding and, you know, we had. Talked about the possibility of having Zach Taylor come in and provide us with a little more detail in terms of the budget and, um, helping us be more fully aware of. What's coming in and we're, what kind of increase we're able to ask for to fund some of the initiatives and some of the positions the district is looking for, so. Is that something we can have added on to one of the future meetings, if that's the will of the committee?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, ju- just to to add to that, um, you know, Bob, I don't know if you wanna reach out to Mark or if we should have Scott reach out to Mark, but I I think it would be really helpful if we start to meet with the finance committee more frequently. Right now, we have a quarterly meeting and I think with everything that's going on, um, we should meet with them a little bit more frequently than that. Uh, we have a lot on the table right now with the. The teachers' contract coming up, with some of the enhancements we wanna make from a technology perspective and, but, you know, most importantly, i- i- as a district, we've. We've approved this very ambitious strategic plan, right? And we wanna continue to make progress as a district and continue to make, and continue to have our students making progress as well. We talked about all the great things that are happening at the high school and all all the great classes that we're offering. Um, you know, we've talked about athletics and all the great athletic programs that we're offering. All these things take money, right? Um, and for us to come in and come up with a f- a level-funded budget is gonna mean a an impact on some of these things, so. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're having the right conversations with the right people, um, so that we continue to move forward.
Take care of that.
I will, yeah. I wish out to Zach Taylor, uh, to meet with the school committee, give us an update, uh, and also, uh, with Mark Shane about more frequent meetings. Maybe monthly meetings, uh, at this point, or are you thinking more frequently than putting out there quarterly?
Yeah, I mean, maybe reach out to Mark and see what his thoughts are. Like, I I I really think, I mean, we're at a point now where. Almost needs to be like weekly. I I think as a committee, we need to get our hands around how the town finances work, but I also think it's important for us to sit down with with them and 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 Zach and whoever the other stakeholders are. And talk through the strategic plan, talk through the vision for the schools, um, the the technology plan, the the capital improvement plan and just have, lay it all out on the table and have a conversation with them. So we can then decide, okay, what's important, how, what do we wanna prioritize going forward and and how do we fund this?
You know, I have, I mean, I've I have a very good understanding of how the town budget works and how the the funding comes from the the state. Um, I. What pieces did you want more information on? Because maybe we can, maybe it's information that we already have. I I I wanna make sure everyone shares in the same, you know, the same knowledge.
Well, there seems. Right, right. There there seems to be a a disconnect, right? 'Cause we 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 have, we have some people telling us that we don't have the funding and that we need to be very conservative. But yet, we have others saying the town's a great financial shape, we have, we're flush with cash, so there there's a disconnect there and I wanna I wanna find out what the real story is. Um, and the only way we can do that is to sit down and have a conversation.
Right, yeah, 'cause they 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 relate to several different things, so those who are glooming doom, saying that we're looking at what's happening with the revenue and the potential budget shortfall's coming from the state and that's gonna slash. Town aid, that's gonna come in. And those who say we have more money than we could ever spend, look at the amount of money that that we have in our in our rainy day fund essentially, which is, has been artificially high because of the Woodland School. And so, they're saying we should be spending down some of that money because there's really no reason to have any more than three or four million dollars. And so they're saying we should be spending down some of that money because there's really no reason to have any more than three or four million dollars. You know, in a in a rainy day account. And so maybe, a- and I I'm I'm all for meetings, I just, I don't know, I don't see what, you know, biweekly meetings with the the finance committee. Is gonna are gonna necessarily do.
You you know, and I get it, cause you haven't been through it. But i- i- it is hard because you're being asked to do negotiations and budgets. Before you know what the hard number is. So the sad thing is, no matter what we do, at the end of the day, they're gonna tell us what our number is. And all the effort that we put into the budgeting is gonna be, they'll now go back and here's your final number and go figure it out. And this happens every time and this, to your point, it's it's tough because things are gonna change. It changes every time and it's just trying to find the minimum impact on the school, the district, the kids and. And, uh, and the taxpayers, it's it's a, it's just an awkward situation to be in. It's not easy, it's the toughest part of this job. But I I get like, you're asking, what is that number? But nobody's ever gonna be able to tell us what that number is until we figure out it, you know, they know what's coming down from the state and everything else like that. I think the best thing to do is to work with Kathy and understand where where the budget is today. Understand like, you know, the zero funded, you know, there's still the one point three you have to come up with somewhere, because that would be a major impact. And, you know, I mean, that these are all things you have to consider in the negotiations and everything else, it's it's a.
Cause I I I think that.
I wish, I wish they could sit there and say, here's your number and now both of you have stuff, but.
Nail all this stuff down, all the questions you have, honestly.
But and I I just, I don't see the downside of increasing communication with the town. Um, and so, and I understand it's at, we're asking a lot because everyone's got busy schedules. Um, and that's why I think we just reach out to Mark and have a conversation with him and see and see what he what he thinks. But I think the more communication we have, um, and the more transparent we are, the better off we'll we'll all be going forward. And, you know, you touched on a very good point. The other thing I wa- I wanted to mention as well, um, you know, we're. We're we're very fortunate in in this community that Milford is in such good financial condition. Because we know state aid is is variable, right? Um, and i- i- and fortunately, Milford's been willing, um, and Milford has had the resources. They've been willing to make up for the the gap there. Um, and we've been very fortunate that that they've always been a great partner and have always been willing to make the necessary in in investment. So, um, there's a a commission that's been established, um, that's been reviewing the foundational budget at 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 the state level. And and as many of you know, the foundational formula was created back in the early nineties, it's over twenty years old and it's become very outdated. So this commission's been put together to look at the foundational formula and they and they've been asking and seeking feedback from different communities. And, you know, I think it would benefit us, um, again, working with with all the stakeholders. To really take a look at that foundational formula and see how that impacts Milford specifically. And then, um, share that feedback with this this commission. And there's a a meeting that's coming up, an informational session, that happens to be March twelfth, so it's our next school committee meeting. So I I'm just gonna throw this out there, I don't know if we wanna reschedule the school committee meeting so that we could attend this informational se- uh, session. I know that Lieutenant Governor Polito's gonna be there, Senator Spiel- Spielka, who sits on the 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 commission, is gonna be there as well as, um, some other legislators. And they're gonna provide a lot of information on the foundational budget and things that we can do to look at how it impacts our town specifically. So that we can then share that feedback. But, um, you know, just some things that that I've noticed in the research that I've done. Um, there there were two things that a lot of communities, uh, two issues that a lot of communities that have raised as concerns with the foundational budget. Um, the the first is that, if you think about it, um, a lot of the the challenges that we face today are very different than what they faced back in the in the early nineties. And even though the state, um, enrollment hasn't changed at all, similar to Milford's enrollment, which hasn't changed at all. The underlying demographics have changed substantially, right? So the number of high need students has 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 increased. So you're spending a lot more on your students today than you were back in the nineties because you have, uh, more low income students, ELL students, and special need students. And in fact, um, they estimate that for special education, um, today, across the state, we're spending over one point two billion dollars. Above and beyond the foundational budget on special education. So that that's one, you know, that's one area they identified. The other area that that they identified is that, um, the 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 amount that's taken into consideration for for salaries. And for health benefits is grossly understated. So right now, the foundational budget, um, is about four hundred and thirty-three million dollars. Or or salary, actual salary is about four hundred and thirty-three million dollars above and beyond what you use to calculate the foundational budget. And the amount that the state is spending on, um, health insurance is over a billion dollars above and beyond what they're calculating to the foundational budget. So you can see how these things would have an impact. We need to be able to translate that into what's happening here at Milford, um, so that we can then provide that feedback. And make sure that we're maximizing the amount we're gonna get from that chapter seventy funding. So and 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 ensure that the amount that we're getting from the state is consistent, um, going forward. Um, so that we can help the town finance side.
Yeah, sure, I mean, you just stated the macrocosm of what we experience every single year when it comes to the budget, where we have to pull the employee benefits out. And we don't put it in as calculated as part of the budget because, you know, we know the town has to take care of that. And the special ed increases, uh, by several percentage points every single year. I think, I think the the, as you were speaking and talking about more meeting time with with the the finance committee. Um, I I think we might have a better effect if we schedule meeting time with the board of selectmen. I think that might be, uh, a stakeholder conversation that we have that we've never done in my time on the school committee. That might have the impact and the effect that that you want. And I think that's a something that would be very smart for us to do, honestly.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, speak to the, uh, budget directive that we received yesterday. Did you get it, Bob, or did I, was I the only one that received it? It came from, um, the Director of Finance Office, Zach Taylor. They're looking for our budget for school committee, um, to submit on or about March fifteenth. We usually have, uh, a few additional weeks after that. But the the town is looking for all budgets for March fifteenth. And they're also asking, of course, that we vet that out with our, uh, subcommittee, the finance subcommittee. So that just to give you a a a date that they're looking for is a point, um, that we should try to meet if we possibly can.
It's effectively two weeks from now.
Yeah, it's a two week window.
Yeah. So we should probably look to meet next week. Sometime.
Well, when are we meeting?
We have a budget meeting set up for the twelfth.
The twelfth, okay.
Um, but not, not hearing this until just now. Okay, I'll have Melissa circulate.
Can we push back on that? I mean, what's the reason for moving it up like two weeks?
They usually g- um, give the school department because our budget is so significantly larger than some of the other town departments. We usually have some wiggle room, you know, and and the town works with us. So I'm just giving you the date that they're asking all town departments to submit, but I'm sure if we have a conversation, they're gonna be.
Cause I mean, they have a lot of other budgets that they will be able to get before that date that they'll have plenty of time to work on.
Exactly.
While we take a little bit of extra time to get our budget squared away.
I would completely agree, I think we should just hold the March twelfth date that we have and push back and say, give us another weekend.
Isn't the twelfth also our next school committee meeting?
It is.
It is.
It's it's we beat the budget at six, the school committee at seven.
All right, awesome.
Anybody else?
Trying to make it convenient for our commuters.
That's good, I I appreciate it.
For our commuters.
Trust me, I appreciate it, yeah.
So there is no executive session, so can I have a motion for adjournment? Patrick, Joe, all in favor? And good night.